Make sure tomorrow our community engagement to make it about sixty-three now. So I had to save money on heating.
Okay, seven o'clock, let's stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All board members are here. Jenny and Heather are excused on the administrative staff. This meeting was submitted to the Green Bay Press-PlaZette on Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The meeting notice was distributed on Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. For posting to the Bank of Luxembourg Home Office, Luxembourg, to the Bank of Luxembourg Home Office, Luxembourg Post Office and Castle Post Office. Our district's mission statement: We inspire minds, challenge students, and promote excellence. We are Sparkless. I need a motion to approve our agenda. Motion by Brandy, second.
I'll second.
Second by Alex, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Prior to making a public comment, individuals must announce their name, address, and group affiliation. Each speaker's comments are limited to three minutes. All statements are to be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Speakers should not expect an immediate response or reaction to their comments. Do we have any? Hearing none. Our next meeting dates are December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at seven at the Elsie High School Multipurpose Room and January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six at seven PM at the Luxembourg Castle High School Multipurpose Room. Board, any opening comments?
Just wanted to compliment the cast and crew of the Friday Show. So they had well attended this weekend and the students did a great job.
It was good, it was fun.
I'm just gonna announce it now that I won't be running for the next term. And so, life's gonna get a little too busy, I think, so I'm just gonna step away from it.
Well, we thank you for your service.
Hope my drink there can just drop.
Alex, I hope you change your mind.
Well.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Maybe you, you know.
I'll take a little break. Things settle down a little bit again.
What are you gonna do with yourself? You know, on the third Wednesday of every month, what are you gonna do?
Came right out of that place to here.
That's, this was Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, there's a difference.
You still have to pull up the form.
I know. Figure this way gives people time to, uh, hopefully there's some people that wanna step up to the plate, so.
Sure. Administration? Can you guys not beat that? Tyson, you wanna start on the end?
Sure. Just to piggyback off of Jenny, the Friday Show was, was great. I loved the theme this year, the kind of murder mystery type of thing. It was cool, I was there Friday night, really, really good attendance. I talked to Jenny, she said Saturday has great attendance as well, so Friday Show did a nice job. We had parent-teacher conferences last Thursday night, high school and middle school together, both good attendance, I think on both sides. Last Tuesday, we had our Veterans Day presentation at school. Here in second block, we had all the juniors in there, about twenty-five veterans that were there in attendance. And I had students submit questions to me ahead of time to ask, just to make sure we had plenty of them for our Veterans Day. Some really, really good questions as the veterans were all leaving, they kinda echoed the same sentiments that they're just really impressed by all the thoughtful questions and things that students had and they liked how it was ahead of time and they could think about it a little bit, so that was, that was nice. Our one-act team is going to state as well, so we've got a little state walkthrough for them. Tomorrow they're going to Stevens Court on Thursday for that. Upcoming, we've got our senior citizen Christmas party on December tenth as well, so a lot of things have happened, a lot of things still to go as well. Since Jenny's not here, I'll just give a, just a brief recap, but we had a very, very successful fall sports season. Football made it to level two of the playoffs. Girls' golf made it to sectionals with one golfer, Jenny's daughter Reese, who had a playoff hole for an opportunity to make it to state as an individual. Cross-country, boys made it to state for the first time since two thousand nine, as well as Claire DeShadow made it for the third year in a row. Boys soccer played in the regional final and then girls volleyball, obviously played at state as well and had a really, really good game with Sawh Curry, who ended up going on to win our division, so I just wanted to highlight the sports for Jenny, because they, their fall sports had a really, really nice season.
So what Tyson said about parent-teacher conferences, I would agree with that. We held our Veterans Day program immediately to follow theirs, ours was the whole student body and the band and choir. On the agenda, you'll see that we did a variety of interviews, so the administrative assistant position is on the agenda, hopefully with your approval. The special education position is on there, hopefully with your approval, and Natalie happens to be sitting right there. We held, we, we were contacted by Bell and Amplify about an opportunity to provide presentations to students about vaping. And we took that person up on that, and so a representative came and she spent the day with us. And we figured out how to get, you know, that presentation done with a small group of seventh graders and eighth graders and seventh graders and eighth graders as they roll through their day. And that went very well, and coincidentally, that was about a week and a half or two weeks ago, or actually two weeks prior to when we learned about the mojo pouches that we sent the communication about, so it was kind of interesting how that worked. Eighth graders had an opportunity to go to the Find Your Inspiration career event in Green Bay in early, early this month. And then things around the corner. I'm signing a bunch of the, you know, blaze orange sheets for the kids who wanna go deer hunting and there are some Thanksgiving turkeys up throughout the building. The student council put those together and they individualized it for each of the staff members, so there's a turkey on the outside of my door or on the outside of Sherry Sewell and Anne Beirst and all of the others. And the feathers represent something the students had positive to say about whomever that staff person was. They surveyed their student body and then that became, so it was pretty neat. There's additional student work that's being put up in the hallways for people to see. So up above our lockers, when the middle school's open for people to come through, a bunch of artwork is there. But also this year are, we have new display cases that are in the main hallway, so if you're going from the main entrance all the way down to the auditorium, they're on the right, kind of the opposite side of the hall of the military shadow boxes. And we have some of the family consumer science work in there, some tech ed work, some artwork, and a picture of the musical cast from last year, so we're trying to use that to start showcasing some of that work for that area where people are coming into the building, so they can still see the middle school campus. And the Christmas concert at the middle school is December eighth in the auditorium, that's up. That's my mom's.
All right. So, primary school, we also have parent-teacher conferences. The scheduled nights are Thursday this week and then next Monday night. A lot of our teachers have already had a couple nights of, or had nights of conferences, because with platooning, we have about forty-some families to get through, so they need at least another, at least one more night. And they're pretty jam-packed, so that means that they're getting really good turnout for them too. Obviously, we have Thanksgiving break coming up, coming up in December. Our kindergarten has their Christmas concerts in the middle of December. We're currently running a boxed food drive in conjunction with the FBLA's holiday drive that they do, so we're collecting boxed food items during the parent-teacher conferences, so we have quite a few boxes in the foyer or in the entryway that are getting full already, so that's good to see. Then we have, you know, some fun dress-up days in December coming up and each of the classrooms is gonna do a little bit of door decorating and have a door decorating contest, so. Yeah, should be fun time. It's hard to believe that we're already talking about Christmas right around the corner. Here it comes.
Well, uh, two things, well, I actually, I have a couple things. One, Ashland School District drove all the way over here to take a look at our, our facilities, and then we've been a mentor school district for them for a modern pathway, so it was a really good opportunity for them to see the work and for them to actually share some ideas with our tech ed teachers, like duck calls and different things that we can make with some environmental equipment that we have, that the kids would get excited about, fishing rods, different things like that, so the teachers are always trying to find out ways to get kids excited about learning. The DWD came, the businesses, three politicians, and it was a really good opportunity for them to see the work that we're doing here. As you might know, school report cards came out on a really positive note. I got a couple of emails from former employees who have left our district and said some very positive, amazing things, like, I just love the culture there when I worked there, I'm not surprised by this, different things like that. So that, that says a lot about the, the teaching staff and who they were working with and the board and the admin group and working together to make it better. Outside of that, there's lots of things that we're working towards with the tech ed department and different trying to figure out how to work on that construction facility, so we just had a small conversation with the tech ed department without adding new spaces, but reutilizing spaces to think differently, so. Just on the front end of that process, they need to process that information a little bit, and then, obviously, as you know, financially, we will have to do some fundraising, so, which Joelle and I already secured seventy-five thousand from one meeting, so hopefully that's still out there for us, so.
He's lying.
Oh, and one other side note, I did get roasted this last week. Cause the coffee, cause the coffee pot broke and someone sent out a email to the district staff saying, watch out, Mike hasn't had his coffee yet, so.
It was a public service announcement.
It was actually really good. I actually laughed a lot, and so were people laughing at me as I was walking down the hallway, so we appreciate humor in our world, so thank you for that.
We're moving there, moving right along. We had CISA seven in on one of our incidentals days, so again, we're kind of planning. They're also in the coach at the primary and high schools, so continuing to do that work and partnering with CISA seven for that, kind of just building the capacity of all of our staff to plan from the beginning and around a diversity of means. In the classroom, also pull together all the special ed staff, I do that just a few times a year. This time we focused in on specially-designed instruction and kind of what that looks like from a special ed lens, so I appreciate those opportunities to pull the staff together and connect. Rebecca and I were gone today as the special ed budgeting in academy, so lots of the instructor professional organization and WPASS and Student Services professional organization partnered together to put it on. It was really nice, it was all the presenters, it was kind of the perspective, both perspectives and how you can kind of work together and collaborate. So I appreciated the time that Rebecca did to start things strategically around some different moves that we can make. Really on top of probably maximize the dollars that we have as it relates to special ed. So that was a great experience, and I wanna let everybody know we are hosting, Elsie's hosting a QPR training, Jaski, some individuals from the county, and then we have a high school student participating, and that's a suicide prevention training, and that's happening December second at six o'clock in our high school. So encourage, it's open to the community. Elgoma and Kewani hosted events earlier in the year. We're kind of trying to just keep that out for the community and anybody in the community to get that training and be part of that.
All right, as she stated, I'm gonna kind of piggyback off that special ed stuff. One of the largest revenue costs that help cover costs for special ed is state categorically, and so we recently received our first payment. There's six payments total that we get throughout the year. And if you recall from the biennial, they increased it from thirty-three percent to forty-two. We were told to budget thirty-eight to forty, I budgeted thirty-eight percent. The first payment is indicating the thirty-five percent. We did get notification from DPI that they do like to do the initial payments on the low end, so that there's no overpayment, because not all special ed annual reports are done yet from last school year, and those are, those are the figures that they use to give that reimbursement this year. So hopefully by that sixth payment, we will see a little higher. I'm still thinking thirty-eight, thirty-nine. It's a some certain cut, so it's a fixed pot of money, and so if there's more claims in it, more age reimbursement, then it's just less than everybody will get. And then, since we brought up heat, so natural gas, I do lock-in pricing every year. I am always looking at locking in from November to April, so I did lock in a total of sixty percent at two different rates at around four dollars and fifty cents a therm. They're now over five dollars now, so that's helpful, and I've read like a natural gas market outlook and they do say that I'm gonna see rising prices, so I was thankful for that. I'm still kind of holding off on doing the remainder, because I felt the price was too high, so I'm just kinda, we'll see what happens.
Fingers crossed.
Yes.
And your new reports? Oh, you want me to do that now? Yeah, okay.
In your consent agenda, I always do, you know, that cash flow report, there's revenue expenses, which is a sky report that shows your fiscal year to date and what we spent for the month. And it's kind of, I think it's hard to read, and I don't think many understand it, so when I attended a conference in October, I joined a session that was like how to have other different type of board reports that are easier. And these guys from CISA five created this money monitoring tool, and I, I just loved it. I just thought it was so neat to show the past two years, along with the current year, but then also just showing where we are always in our spending and the revenue coming in and that we're always on that same path, so that we don't see anything really like fluctuating. And when I, you know, uploaded everything, I'm like, yep, we are always spending at the right level that we have in for the last three years. And so it does that for the expenses and then it will do that for revenues. And then it will give you the cash flow and where we at for cash flow every month, and I like that it keeps the entire year there for you guys to see that. Yeah, so I mean, I, I just thought it was a helpful tool, and so I will provide that every month as additional information. I was telling Joelle and Mike, you know, I think it's January, we say, you know, hey, we're about fifty-seven percent spent. And I said, I can say that, but this is just more transparent to show you, yes, oh my God, yep, they are fifty percent, they're, you know, right on time to where they should be, so. I just thought it was an extra tool.
Looks good. Thank you.
So our teachers' union did a survey of their membership, and so Rebecca and I met with the union president and Todd before we went over the results. Nothing that we wouldn't expect, you know, a survey from union members to, to ask for and to want, no, no big surprises there. But we were able to give Todd some additional information, you know, he's like, oh, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. So I mean, it was, it was a good conversation in the union position to give some, some additional background information and point out some things that are happy in this, who he's not aware of, or less aware of. In the consent agenda, there's an employment hire for special ed at the middle school. Remember that we had an overload with Laurenir and Wendy Jacobs kind of stop-gupping, because we didn't have that position filled. And so now we're gonna be hiring somebody so that they can get off that overload, which is gonna be awesome. And then we have a community engagement session for strategic planning tomorrow, six o'clock at the Heritage Room. You all have those little flyers, those are gonna be mailed out to every household in the district to take a survey. The survey's already gone out to parents and staff members, because we were able to do them through email, so. So those went out a little bit early and we already have three hundred responses, and, and the responses are coming back with some really good information. But tomorrow is the, the inclusive community engagement, then that survey closes December seventh, and then we'll get the results from that and then continue on with the strategic processes.
Next item is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes unless a board member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alex.
I'll second.
Second by Robin, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. I think it's getting warmer instead of cooler. School liaison report, Neil?
Want me to turn that down?
Please, if you can.
I don't know, I've been down most of the week, that's all you have to do.
Just try it out once.
Pretty standard first quarter. Don't wanna say that it was, you know, on a mental or anything, cause I don't wanna jiggle us, and it really wasn't, it's always a mental first quarter of the school. Right now, today and tomorrow, Dana and I have been in Alex's training here that Matt and Joelle had teamed up and were able to bring it here, which is good, considering, was it Kyle? Not Matt, George was like four hours away when he got sent, so it's kind of nice to have it close to home and only fifteen minutes versus four hours. Very good training, I've been through the training before. It's Alex's training, basically it's to how to teach staff, how to prepare if there's an active shooter. Our staff is trained on it every year, but now in the people that are in the training, we are able to train, officially train our staff, we don't have to rely on the intermediate school staff, who are the only ones that are officially trained as instructors to teach our staff, so having some more people dispersed throughout the district in each of the buildings to teach the staff is very nice to have. So basically learning the acronym of ALIS today and then doing some scenarios, we learn how to teach the scenarios to our district and our staff members. Tonight, we had homework, have homework that we have to present to our peers from our other class, so can't wait to get home and do that. And then tomorrow we teach and then the, I think we're gonna go through some more scenarios and then we'll be certified to teach our, our district employees, so. It's good, good training, so, anybody have any questions? Oh, one thing I did wanna add, on the quarterly report, at least mine, I don't, I don't think Dana does it at all, but every, if you notice the school safety, I, it's the number is up a little bit. I started putting my, every day, I'm in the cafeteria, cafeteria monitoring local lunches, so I never really put that on my report, but in any of my events or in any of my hours, so I put that in there this year, so if you see that number go up, that's why. But it doesn't really make a difference, it's something that's always done, I've just never documented it, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven district calendar parameters.
So we rolled out the following calendar scenario. Obviously, you know, we can't start the school year, the earliest date is September first. I just took last year's calendar and put it in there, typically the board wants us to get out before Memorial Day, which in that situation, we would be out before the teachers would be out. My question, there is also a spring break put in there with, I think, three professional development days. I guess my question to you is what parameters would you like? There's a committee I work with and support, and so it makes it easier if we kind of have an outline up before we go into the meeting if the board has any thoughts or things they don't wanna see in there, so we don't have to change it at the meeting when we bring it back, as a, try to get a finalized product right away. We try to do this with the teachers group, obviously you don't have to do that anymore, but we feel it's important to work with the teachers and do things together, so.
The one thing I noticed is that when the calendar dates fell the same way the last time, like prior to a lead year, we still went to school on December twenty-third. So I think this year we said we weren't because of however the dates fell. So I don't see why we wouldn't go to school with three days versus just the two that we, leading up to Christmas. It's projected or it's suggesting that winter break starts already on the twenty-third, which would be a Wednesday?
No.
But the last calendar day.
That's interesting, so we.
I think now remember the last couple of years, what's happened with Memorial Day has been really early. And so we had no room to spare on Memorial Day. Now that it's a little bit later, I know that we have three professional development days on this calendar, which we didn't have previously. And I think we would just have a little bit more wiggle room, but we're still getting out, you know, for Memorial Day.
Right, well, and Memorial Day is going to be the very last day of the month, the thirty-first, so the latest that it could ever be.
Right, after, you know, two years of it being like really early, actually two years.
So can I restate what I thought I heard this age, I need just to make sure I'm on the same page? You want us to consider going all the way up to December twenty-third and the first day off from spring break would be the twenty-first, not spring break, Christmas break would be the twenty-fourth, is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, when I looked at the other ones, I kind of, kind of compare, like, when the holiday falls on the weekend, it's very common, even in the private sector, that they observe that on the Friday, right? Or when it falls on the, you know, on the Sunday, you observe it then. So, yeah, like I said, I just kind of looked back and it was one of those things where, hey, you know, we've gone to school through the twenty-third in the past, so it was kind of like, why wouldn't we go to school through the twenty-third?
I just copied the calendar from one year to the other.
On years that we go to school on the twenty-third, do we still have like three and a half days of minimum minutes test?
A minimum of like.
On the bottom, yeah, so, so our.
I think they all show, you know, I mean, the calendars don't all show, because those hours that accumulated at the bottom, that's, that doesn't get put out like to the families and stuff, when you look at the school calendar posted, that's just kind of our own knowledge.
It is, because what ends up happening, those are implement weather days. If we go over those days that are in parentheses, then we have to start making up time, or making the DPI.
So, so we.
So we'd have basically an extra snow day if we went to school on the twenty-third.
Or we could cut it short and move back.
Right, so, so we could go to school on the twenty-third, the kids could get out, get out a day earlier.
Which I would be opposed to.
The only thing is, speaking as a former teacher, when your kids are little, it's nice to have an extra day before Christmas Eve.
During that, or if you're traveling to get somewhere.
Right, or if you're traveling.
Yeah. Basically, the hours and minutes of instruction at the bottom that you're looking at. Basically, the hours and minutes of instruction at the bottom that you're looking at are required. Minutes that we have.
My thought was on years that we would go to school on the twenty-third, was it because we needed the three, you know, was it at two and a half perhaps instead of three and a half?
So it depends. It depends on the year. So basically, we go to, students go to school for a hundred and seventy-two days out of the year. That's what our goal is. And then the teachers have a hundred and ninety-day contract. So we, so there's always wiggle room some most years to manipulate, move things around outside of that. And it's just nice to have parameters. I know what you guys are thinking. I hadn't even bring this up to that group yet. I like to talk to you guys first and hear what you have to say. And I know in the past, that's usually a conversation we have as well. Do we, is it the twenty-third, the twenty-second, whatever it may be.
So we can definitely make sure that's discussed in the committee.
Yeah. Because I looked at two, like at one, one of the particular years when we did have a Christmas break that started on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and it ran through like students and stuff first returned on January fourth. The last day of school that year was June eighth. So.
Yeah, that, that, that calendar had a hundred and seventy-seven days.
Yeah. So I mean, so we've improved, you know, in some places, but it's almost like if we were able to pull off like a Friday before Memorial Day, when it was even earlier, I kind of feel like we could maybe pull off, you know, an extra day or two at the end when Memorial Day's the thirty-first. It's the last possible day.
It's all possible.
It just looks like when you look at graduation, you're like, wow, it's like the nineteenth and students are still going to school like one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven days.
Clarify that because that doesn't mean that graduation won't move the, the next week either.
Correct.
Those dates are just, it's just all copied over from one to the next. So when I asked Tyson, when, you know, if we look at it, he probably will change it to the following week.
It just looked like drastically, you know what I mean? I was like, wow, you know.
Yeah, really, the only thing that's on this schedule, I think that's really changed the updates in the calendar that they went from this year up to next year.
And I just want to show you kind of a layout. I didn't want to give you one because then if I come in with a fixed calendar, then they said, well, this is what Mike wants. And so I didn't really want to, I don't like doing that.
No, you have a scapegoat.
Yeah, put on the board.
You have big shoulders.
I'll take it. I'll just say this is what Mike wants. Any other, any other feedback? No? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Decorating graduation caps.
So I received an email from a group of students and I copied and pasted what the actual email said right in here into this document. And then after I got that, Joel and I had a conversation of, you know, has this ever been brought? Has it been brought up? And Joel hadn't remembered it being brought up since she's been here. I had brought it up to Jenny as well, since she's been here longer as well, asking if she had ever heard of the idea of decorating caps has been brought up. And she said she can't remember whatsoever. So really tonight, I just wanted to see if the board has a strong opinion either way on what you, what you feel. There, there's really two trains of thought, I think, when it comes to decorating caps for graduation. The first thought is that graduation is a formal ceremony and should not be allowed whatsoever. When I've reached out to all the schools that you see on the second page of that document, a lot of the schools that responded had this very similar statement here that said graduation is one of those times in school when everyone is equal, GPA may be different and career plans may be, may be different, but we all celebrate the exact same diploma. You know, they would say whether that was the little ship diploma or whomever it was, I just put the LCHS diploma in there. But that was kind of a common theme from the eight schools that responded and said that they don't allow it. The second kind of train of thought is that at the end of the day, the graduation ceremony is really for the students. It's their day. So does allowing them to decorate their caps appropriately take away from the day when it's their ceremony and it should be their memories that they have? So what I then did as well is I tried to reach out to as many of the schools around in our area as I, as I could as well as at one of my NEC principal meetings, I talked with all of the conference schools as well to see what they did, did not do. And this is what the results of kind of all the schools around us as well as the NEC does as well. So out of the nineteen schools, I talked to eleven of them. Allow it. Eight do not. I, I will be completely honest. I do not have a strong opinion. Either way, I could, I concede both sides of what it says. Obviously, if we decided we were going to allow it, we would have to come up with parameters around what is appropriate, what's not appropriate, how we would be checking on, what we would do if there would be inappropriate one. So it, it is more work and it becomes more work, but ultimately to me, I don't have a real strong opinion. Either way, I talked to Katie Wejji, who was our graduation advisor, and she was in the same boat as well. She didn't have a real strong opinion for or against it. But before obviously making any decision if we were going to or going to do or keep it how we have, I wanted to see if you guys as a board had any, any real strong opinion either way.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Are they referencing having different colored tassels? Is that what they're ref, they're, they're referencing decorating the top of, okay.
Correct. So decorating the tops of it.
Because in the past, we've had a conversation, if I'm at youth apprenticeship, you would get this for your academic thing. So it would be more along the lines of what it was. It's not you decorating, it's you showing your area of expertise or what part you were involved in. So I just want one to make.
No, this is strictly like decorating the tops of the caps. And those that did allow it, I tried to gather some feedback as well, like what they do. A lot of them said that they can decorate the tops, but it can't be like elevated whatsoever. They can't have things dangling down from it or anything. So I did, I did see some feedback in some of the schools that are allowing it and kind of what they allow, how they're doing it, how they're checking it. Other checking was kind of across the board. Some of them are doing it a couple of days ahead of time. Some of them are doing it at the ceremony. So again, I, I personally don't have a strong opinion. I wanted to see what, where your thoughts were on it.
Personally, I think my mind, I, I wouldn't allow it, but at the end of the day, I'm not policing it. You're going to be. And it's probably more up to you guys because if people go too far, yeah, what's it going to entail to undo it? Or you're not, now we got to get you a different hack because you screwed up. You know, I don't know how messy it can get, but personal opinion, I would say.
I, I agree simply from the fact that I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, but I would say if I had to choose one or the other, I would say, I'd say to not allow it only because it seems to be opening up just another opportunity for someone to be singled out or picked on or some problem that we don't already have to deal with on that day.
Personally, I think I would, I don't think it's probably one way or the other. I'd ask for graduating class on top of the dating side, the majority, I think, will happily, as long as it was for reasonable for him. So I've been seeing or.
I'm also putting the front side of, you know, there are, there are, I can see those sides fairly evenly.
I like it. I guess I like it really well, but I like individuality.
Yeah, surprised it took so long to.
I like how I can do it. I like it.
I think, I mean, it is getting more and more popular. You can see from the list a lot, the majority of the nineteen that I reached out are. I agree, it is just, the hard part is the policing of it.
That's the only thing. I don't have a problem with it. I just, it just seems like one more thing that needs to be policed. And that's on you.
That's the ultimate.
I took some time to talk to some of those schools that allowed it and asked them, I'm like, so what, what is your plan? Or what do you do when it's not, you know, some of them told me that once their hat is done, it's left at school and that's what they're given because they don't trust their own students to not change the design after it was approved by somebody, you know? Then all of a sudden, no graduation isn't until two days later. And hey, you know, that's not what you showed up with. Some of the schools said that the reason they don't allow it is because they don't allow anything from outside. So that brought me back to the couple of years of our conversation about courts and how we don't allow any courts that are not a school issue court. So my thought was that you shouldn't be decorating your hat that is anything different than LC school. So if you're going to go to Madison and you're going to put a big W on it, you really shouldn't because, you know, we're not allowing you to wear a court from something that isn't. I mean, a court is very minor. So I think if we allow the hat thing, it's just going to stir the pot again about the courts. We're going to get revisited again with that.
That'll work. I'm just looking.
Well, last year we updated, they asked again last year. I want to say the two, the last two years, they asked about the courts because they were given courts from an outside organization and were told no.
But they're just screaming for individuality.
Well, and for a while, they used to wear flags.
Yes. And that, that helped to control that, you know, was when the board, you know, updated that policy, like no one, there weren't draping like large flags anymore. They had very tasteful looking stools and stuff. So that was, you know, that was very nice and very appropriate. But. So again, you know, if we're trying to keep everything uniform, you know, then I would say no.
I think they can be kind of cute. But, I mean, I see taking more like the masking tape and using the masking tape and writing like they do college.
I did see ones from Denmark. Somebody had, they had huge artificial flowers like all the way around. I mean, it just, it was just like a destruction. I mean, and I actually kind of felt bad for the students sitting behind her because they really couldn't see around her because there was these huge silk flowers all circling the hat.
I just want to be a florist.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting conversation. Obviously, it's happening all over because we're seeing more and more and more schools that are doing it. It's an interesting debate, for sure.
So the ball's in your court.
Thanks. No, it's, it's helpful just to know additional thoughts and opinions. Like I said, I, I do not have a strong opinion, but it's, it's important to hear all those other thoughts and opinions.
Discuss and approve the twenty-five, twenty-six safety drill evaluation.
So this is something we have to do for the Department of Justice, Office of School Safety. There's some specific safety documents we have to upload to them by January first. And this is one of those. Every year, at the beginning of the year, each building does a safety drill and then the board principal kind of evaluates, you know, what happened, what we do better. And then that has to be presented to the board for approval. And then that will get uploaded to the Office of School Safety. So that is what this is.
I was amazed how fast you can get all these kids out. I don't think we used to do that.
I won't tell you all our secrets.
You send the slow ones out first. You know, you're the, you're the furthest from the door. So you guys go.
Right now, it's recess, so half of the building are here.
Good job, guys. Discuss and approve Star College now and UW early.
What do you got to hold on to?
Oh, we can vote on it. Sorry. Well, in all this heat. I need a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six safety drill.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Robin, second.
I'll second.
And a second by Jonathan. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. I'm not used to keeping it this warm at all. Discuss and approve Star College now and UW early college credit for spring twenty-five, twenty-six. The list is there.
Yep, just more students applying for spring.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jenny, second. Second by Alex. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. Discuss and approve student activity account for PBIS.
So PBIS is just a staff led group which will fundraise money and then buy things for positive behavior, things for students. So just create an activity account for them to fundraise money and then pay money. How good.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alex, second.
I'll second.
And a second by Dave. See, you got to speak up. So like, here you go. Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. Discuss and approve the student activity account for student consult.
Similar thing, just activity account to fundraise and pay money. How good.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Jenny. Dave, you want to jump in?
Sure.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carried. Discuss and approve the donation to the fitness center from John Honeman.
So John Honeman's making a donation of a bare squat machine. You know, this was done in conjunction with, you know, talking to Neil about, you know, can we use the machine? And then Neil talked to our athletic trainer who agreed that that would be a, a good addition to the fitness center. So it, so the bare squat machine will be installed in the fitness center for students.
Thank you, Jen.
Make that motion.
Motion by Alex, second.
I'll second.
Second by Robin. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. Information items, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
This is because we agreed the annual meeting and budget hearing minutes do not need to be approved. However, it is allowable for the board to review them at the board meeting following the annual meeting. And so we kind of agreed that that would be our process. And so that's why it's under information, just so that it's just part of the record. Any comments? No? Looking good. Strategic planning? So this is just an overview of the strategic planning process now that we're working with Donovan Group. I just wanted you guys to be able to see that, to see, you know, kind of where we are in what stages. And so we're really kind of working on stage one and we're, we're starting to go into stage two. A little bit of stage three with the community engagement session.
Okay, I need a motion to, I'm sure. Motion by Brandy?
I'll second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Now we go, we go into the polls.
Yes. It was eighty-one point five in case you were wondering. I hit the eighty-one point six actually. I hit the override button and I actually went down. I should have told her to hit the button earlier.
No, no, I, I did. And it was, I got set at eighty-five.
Did you hit the override button?
Seventy-two more. He's like so old, seventy-two. So why that, that seventy-two?
There's a button down there.
I like, I'm not on your screen.
There's only one little button. They're helping out. But you have to put the override button to get.
I mean, if we're like super, super chill, like we'll bump it up.
No, whether or not, that's a different one. There's cool air coming out.
But I would never run out of sixty.
So I have a feeling that there's an issue with that.